Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners Staff Meeting February the ninth. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
I know her. There she is, Commissioners. Good afternoon, yeah. We have a few things on the agenda, but as I looked at our agenda that is coming before us today, it's a lot of good news. And as we look at things surrounding us, sometimes we're lightly have not had a lot of good news. But the business of the county continues on, even though, of course, the pandemic has taken the forefront, but there the the business of the county continues. So I'm going to go right into the agenda items. And our first agenda item is JFS is going to discuss children's services placement, contract process, and the safe sleep campaign. I know Tim is the one, and he has several other people with him. And Tim, are you leading the discussion?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And I wonder if I could ask a favor of you that we do the safe sleep presentation first, because we have a couple of guests, I hope, from Cradle, Cincinnati. Ryan Adcock, who's the Executive Director, and then Dr. Marilyn Meredith Shockley-Smith, who is their Director of Equity and Community Strategies, and just a wonderful advocate in the community for equity and inclusion, as well as for for Cradle. So if that's okay.
Certainly, no problem.
Great. I know you guys have a lot to get to today. So I will share my screen with you. And naturally, it's not sharing. So in the event that it doesn't, I have from the Department of Redundancy Department, multiple, multiple people ready to share. So Laura, if you want to share the safe sleep campaign, please do, because for whatever reason.
It's not, I see it, Tim.
Oh, you do? Great.
Yes.
So again, thank you, Commissioners, for having us here today. Want to share with you and talk through a very robust safe sleep campaign that we hope to kick off in March. You'll remember, we originally spoke to you about this effort back in October of last year and said, when we were ready to, ready to go, we wanted to come back and share with you kind of the planning that we've done. Quick refresher, during the middle stages of last year, it became very apparent to Margie and I that sleep-related deaths were were increasing during the pandemic. And I remember one night, as I was driving home, after Margie and I had talked about this, an effort that Ryan had put together previously for Cradle Partners in a year when we saw sleep-related deaths increasing. And he asked all the partners sort of to do what you can to get the message out there about safe sleep. So everybody did something. We did a text campaign for all of our people on public assistance, all of our childcare providers, to share with them the ABCs of safe sleep. And, you know, fortunately, numbers declined over the next several months, and the year ended up in in the, in or below, Ryan, I can't remember the range, that that we've that we've traditionally seen as as we've made progress as a county, bringing these sleep-related deaths down. So as I, as I thought about it, I thought, given, you know, this happening and the fact that we had a shutdown, a lockdown of people in March, April, and May, and, you know, that was probably going to mean a a larger number of little Hamilton Countyans running around in the first quarter of this year, that we needed as JFS to do everything we could to ensure that those, those, those infants see their first birthday and and many others to come. So the next day, I reached out to to Ryan, and that sort of puts us here today. So we'll run through the very brief, very brief PowerPoint, share some of the nuances of the campaign and the partnerships. And then I'll turn it over to Ryan and Meredith to share any thoughts that they have, and then certainly answer any questions you have or hear any thoughts that that you may have about direction. So hopefully, we'll come back up. Okay. So why a safe sleep campaign? While there were positive results overall, and and Ryan will be publishing those for 2020 for infant mortality in the county, the exception was safe sleep. In 2020, we saw 21 sleep-related infant deaths, and that's more than at any point in the last decade. Importantly, two-thirds of the sleep-related deaths in the county were to black families. So because of that, and the traditional fact that that is, that is a fact, these families have been identified as a key audience for the campaign. I already mentioned lockdown and the likelihood of more childhood births. And we thought of this campaign, and I know we talked to you about this in in October, that the campaign very much supports the the board's agenda of reducing infant mortality, but also addressing racism as a public health crisis. So the planning, obviously, we reached out to Cradle and negotiated with them to implement this campaign, because frankly, you know, Cradle is a very, very trusted local partner, and they live and breathe this every day, and are are better at putting something like this together than we would be. We hope the campaign to kick off in March. Because of the 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 demographics of the sleep-related deaths, Ryan and his team have reached out to two African-American mothers, Brittany Berry and Vagie Ferguson, who have been deeply involved in the design of this process. And importantly, as it relates to the Office of Equity and Inclusion in Hamilton County, 60% of the total spend of the design of the campaign will support African-American businesses in Hamilton County. So here's our partners. I think you can see a very wide cross-section of folks, and Ryan can speak to this more, but many of these stakeholders have a very personal connection to a sleep-related loss.
Are you able to enlarge that at all?
Um, you know, I don't think so.
Okay, don't mess with it. We'll keep it on.
I know, I'm always has, but I will send it, I, it was in the packet, but I will send it to you separately, so you'll be able to to see. But Ryan and his team put put together a great group of folks who will continue working on this project throughout. With that, I'll turn it over to Meredith and Ryan for thoughts that they may have and want to share with the board.
Sure.
Well, thank you for that overview and for your partnership, Tim. This is really exciting. And I'll go back to where you started, just to emphasize a point that we're actually going to have later this year, some very, very encouraging and positive news around infant mortality overall. And the reason for that is we're seeing steep, steep declines in the leading cause of infant death, which is extreme preterm birth. We're seeing those declines specifically in the black community, which is reducing racial disparity in this issue. So there's really going to be a lot of encouragement to share with the whole community. And while we share that encouragement, we're also going to share a little bit of challenge, which is that we saw one type of infant death go up last year and go up rather significantly. And so this is really well timed, and for that reason, we're excited about it. I think the only context I would add is just to emphasize something Tim said right there at the end, which is, as we've started planning for this campaign, we've included not a lot, not just a lot of good organizational partners, but lots of folks who have really personal experience with this issue. People who've lost nieces and nephews, people who've lost cousins, people who've lost friends. And that's changed the conversation in, I think, a really important way, and is going to show up in the empathy with which we approach the issue when when it comes to rolling out this campaign. With any public health messaging, it can be easy to accidentally be sounding like you're wagging your finger or judging folks. And this committee has really brought kind of the opposite approach, which is, which is to say, hey, infant sleep is one of the hardest things you go through in life, even when it's going well. And we know that, and we want to be here for you with your community. And let's all keep our eye on the big picture. The healthy kid at age one is worth the struggle. And I know my colleague Meredith is on here with me as well, and she really led the the process of making sure that this is as inclusive as possible, and that we've got families not just at the table, but really leading the strategy. And so would welcome a couple of thoughts from you.
Sure. So I think that Brittany Berry and Vagie Ferguson, first of all, thank you so much for having me on this call and for taking on this really important work that that needs to happen in Hamilton County. But I would add that Brittany Berry and Vagie Ferguson, who are leading this work, are going back to the larger community and asking more and more black women. So it's not just the two of their voices, but rather a collective voice from the Queens Village Boards that are happening in Cincinnati. We know that sleep is a cultural conversation for black women. There is a whole thing about what our grandmothers are telling us, what our mothers are telling us, versus what data is telling us. And so really trying to be mindful that we are efficient and effective in thinking about disparities and those outcomes. And as we were planning, it was just really apparent. And so I really appreciate the time that we've been able to spend thinking and talking, collecting the voices of black women and centering them as we shift outcomes in Hamilton County.
Thank you so much. I can't help but think about former Commissioner Todd Portune, whose his desire was to make sure, and Ryan knows about that, that that infants are protected. And I know Denise was probably going to speak to that also. So I'll just move to Vice President Alicia Reese. You have any comments or questions?
I just want to say, this is great. Looking forward to it. And certainly, the, at the state level, one of the things we're pushing through the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus was the issue of infant mortality, getting more funding for that. And I know we're moving to the next phase is maternal health, so that the mom, African-American mom, and it doesn't have an income. Maybe you could maybe talk about that, I don't know, Ryan and Meredith. Because a lot of times, we think of some of these issues as only income-based. But as we saw, you know, from a national perspective, Serena Williams, who, you know, multimillionaire, still not African-American moms, treated differently. And obviously, as we're dealing with racism as a public health crisis, that issue of moms and black women and the disparities that exist from a medical perspective, maybe also in your work with this, you know, having that conversation, like you were saying, as well, because it all ties in together. We've got to have a healthy mom to have a healthy baby. So I don't know, Meredith or Ryan, if you want to maybe talk a little bit about how that works into this work in terms of a safe sleep campaign.
Sure, I'm happy to start. We have been partnering with the University of Cincinnati to talk about maternal death in particular. That is happening in partnership with medical professionals, in particular providers, to talk about advocacy, how do we give moms the space, the honor to advocate and to be heard? And so there's that piece of the work, also helping moms understand educationally how, what signs you need to look for so that you can advocate, so kind of creating some education space. And then there's the work at Cradle Cincinnati, there are multiple arms. And so there's the Learning Collaborative, which Lauren Everett leads. And so she's gathering those medical professionals regularly to have the conversation about how do I listen better? And more importantly, how to then, do I disseminate that information to my colleagues so that we are certain that everybody is doing that work? In addition, we're working on equity badging across hospital systems so that we can have some accountability to your data. What are you doing? And can you share that externally with us so that we can hold you accountable to your actions? So I think between the two of those things that will be woven into it, we are certainly considering maternal health and death. Thank you for that question.
And I'll just emphasize the good point you made about this really not being an income issue. We have lots of folks who hear us talk, and for whatever reason, what they heard us say was poor black women. And that's not what we said. What we said was black women. And so it's really, the the conversation has to be around racism, systemic racism, its role on these issues, and not necessarily income inequality, or certainly not exclusively that. We have looked at outcomes locally and compared, for example, women who are Medicaid insured to women who are not Medicaid insured. And that change that usually is impacted by by income doesn't improve outcomes if you're black. And so we really need to think beyond that that somewhat old, old version of thinking. And while I have the mic for one second, Vice President Reese, maybe the last time we talked, at least amongst it, was when I was much younger, and was shortly after my father's funeral. My dad was Malcolm Adcock, the Health Commissioner of Cincinnati, for 12 years. And I had the the privilege of coming to Cincinnati City Council, where he was a council member at the time, and will long be held in my memory, some really nice words that you had to say about my father at the time. And it's, it's always a privilege to continue on his legacy in public health. And just wanted to know how much your words meant to me 16 years ago, 17 years ago at this point.
Thank you. And your, your father would be definitely proud of of you. And Dr. Adcock was my go-to. Anything for help. What did Dr. Adcock say as I chaired the the Health Commission? But I'm so happy that, the Health Committee, rather, I'm so happy to see you in this work. And I just want to say to Tim, I think this is a good partnership, because, you know, even though we're talking about, you know, safe sleeping, it's a broader picture. So to partner with Cradle, where they're doing some of the broader work, kind of brings us out of the silo, but brings us into the whole bigger conversation, and helps us leverage our dollars to really help the citizens. So great partnership, Tim. Ryan, looking forward to working with you in this capacity. And Meredith, thank you so much for your words and the work that you said you've already started on these issues. So thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Dre House.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the update on the work. That that one indicator is distracting, right? It's, it's heading in the wrong direction. So I'll be interested to learn with you why that is heading in the wrong direction, as the other indicators head in the right direction. So that I'll look forward to hearing back about that as you guys get further into the work. But it sounds like you're asking the right questions of the right people, for which I am grateful, because you guys know, you know, how to do this work, and you've been a forerunner for years here in this space. So thanks again for joining. Thanks for the update. I too applaud the partnership with JFS. So when, when will we see something more conclusive about what you just reported out?
We'll be going public with it in mid-April, which probably means towards the end of March, we'll be looking to maybe connect with you all one-on-one, just to give you the kind of the full report on what's, we've got about 90% of the data in, and there's a little bit of a data lag that happens with this. So we'll know within the next month or so, quite a bit more information. And we have the same core question that you do, which is why? Why is stuff getting better? Why are other things getting worse? And that's what we're trying to dig into.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your work that you do and that you'll continue to do. And also, not just from your expertise, but including those parents that are impacted by this. You couldn't do it without them. So thank you so much for the information.
Yeah, and thank you, Madam President. If I could just say, so that, so that you guys know, Ryan always refers back to Commissioner Portune and his vision of this. On the anniversary of of Commissioner Portune's passing, Ryan put out a very moving statement about that. So the the past is not forgotten. And he and and Dr. Shockley-Smith, we just couldn't have better partners for this, or better advocates for this. So we're really excited to get this going.
Awesome. Great. Thank you, guys. And and partnership, I mean, we just save money, we save energy, we don't, we're not redundant. So if we can do more of that in all areas, that would be great. Thank you, guys, so much. Okay, Tim, we're going to discuss the children's services placement contracts now.
So I'm going to try to share my screen again, so let's see how that goes.
Yes.
You can see it?
Yes.
Great. So, you know, very brief background on this, and then Margie Weaver and Laura Wolf are also with us, and they'll, they'll help me walk through this document. But certainly, over the course of your time as Commissioners, probably one of the most frequent contracts you will see, certainly from JFS, but probably in general, are related to the placement of kids in various entities throughout Hamilton County, throughout surrounding counties, throughout the state, and sometimes out of state. The contracts generally may have a high-dollar figure related to them. There may or may not be kids in them at that time. But we go through a procurement process for these and try to meet the needs of all the kids who we may see based on historical data and those sorts of things. So I'll start with that as a baseline, talk to you a little bit about the background and philosophy. Margie will then sort of talk to you about the numbers that we, we are seeing. And then Laura will sort of walk you through the the procurement process that we use, how we, how we try to make sure we get the right providers, expand our provider base, and then, of course, answer any questions or hear any thoughts that that you have. So there's, there's basically nothing more important than our, that our department does than provide care and placement for children in Hamilton County who have been abused or neglected. And we do everything we can to try to keep them close to home, because we know from all the data, all the best research, that keeping a child close to home and keeping them in a, in an environment where they're able to go to their same school or be around the the same folks is just better for them. Sometimes that's not possible, based on the the need that the child may have. So sometimes we have to look outside of Hamilton County. We try to look in surrounding counties, which are actually sometimes closer to their, to their school, particularly if they're in the eastern part of the county. But we always endeavor to do that. And we've gotten more successful over the last few years, reducing the number of kids that have to go out of county by by about 7%. And it's something we continue to do. So Margie's going to kind of walk you through where we stand as to where kids are currently placed, and some of the trends that we're seeing.
Hello, Commissioners. I will just give a brief overview. You have the information in front of you. So how are we doing overall? As Tim said, we do pretty well. We have, you know, 96% in Ohio, and 86% of our children are in Hamilton County or in close proximity, so in neighboring counties, Warren, Claremont, and we also count Montgomery in that. 10% are elsewhere in Ohio, and only 4% are outside of Ohio. And what I note about the children who are outside of Ohio, there are primarily two buckets of those children. One bucket is children who are with kin. So often, you know, obviously, kin is priority if a children, a child can't remain in their own home. And at times, we, those kinship placements are, you know, outside of Ohio. So the other bucket is are really children who have very specialized, unique needs. And this year was a challenging year in terms of the pandemic and placements. And so we saw a slight increase in children who had to be placed out of state, and those are children who are in residential facilities, congregate care facilities, getting specialized treatment. So the factors really, in looking at how we decide what we need in the system, obviously are driven by the children's needs. We have an obligation, if children need to come into care, we, we are obligated to do our best to provide for everything that they need while they are in our care. So that's our primary obligation. We're looking at, obviously, child safety, child permanency, and again, the the primary needs of the child, with, you know, siblings being placed together as a priority, children being local for, you know, the reasons Tim talked about, and obviously, in families. So we have a priority in terms of, you know, if a child can't be with kin, then then we do our best, in most cases, making sure that they're in family settings and not in residential or congregate care settings. So that's really what drives our procurements. And we do try to cast a wide net, and Laura will talk about the procurement process. But really, we try to, you know, we don't want to be, have a child come in and and not have capacity or availability for that child. So we try to, again, using those priorities really in terms of local placement, and, you know, again, more extensive availability of foster homes. We we try the best that we can to make sure that we are meeting those needs through our network, and we're not, you know, contracting with a provider at last minute that we don't know, that we're not familiar with. So on that note, I'm going to pass it on to Laura to talk about the procurement process. The other thing I would add, obviously, too, is we're always looking at matching children and families and connecting them, because we want placement stability for children.
Okay. Nothing more exciting than to talk about procurement in the afternoon after lunch on a snow day. So I I won't go into all the various details of what procurement is about. I can provide other types of documents to talk about that. But one of the things that Margie and I pride ourselves on is, over the years, have had collaborative relationships with our our partner communities in those counties that she was describing. We have issued joint procurements with those partners to try and broaden the array of folks and choices that we have to match kids with placements that they need. And first of all, we have to use procurement for these programs, because we're using federal dollars. Federal dollars require that we do a fair and open competition, and we cannot use geographic preference as an element by which you are securing those placements or those contracts, which kind of is counterintuitive to what you want to do with placements. So we incorporate expectations for the providers about providing services in the communities with which families live, to, we also incentivize folks by trying to help them understand financially that if they keep kids in their homeschool districts and in the communities from which they come from, that they can earn extra dollars on top of the reimbursements they have for their, their daily rates. We've done lots of things to try and incent, as well as ensure we have a great provider community and broad array of services. Again, I know you have the document that you can read on your own. There's federal language that kind of sets a lot of those requirements up. But we also incorporate folks on our review panel, including frontline supervisors, community partners, such as the Guardian Ed Leitem's office, and other folks that work with us hand-in-hand around placement decisions for children, to sit at the table when we are evaluating proposals. That helps give a voice, not only of the children from a diff, and families from a different perspective, but also those of our community business partners that work with us in support of families and kids. We have done a lot around those pieces over the years, and hopefully, with the implementation of the Family Voice Program, that'll be another step that will help further bring families into the process of evaluating how we're doing our work and how we're buying our services. As you can see here, we have 31 placement providers whose primary offices are in the county, and 31 are from outside the county. So it's about half and half. But that doesn't mean actual placements for kids. As Margie stated earlier, it was 86% of the kids are actually within Hamilton County. We are actually getting ready to issue an RFP for residential treatment services. So that's an exciting thing that we've got. We post them on our website. We engage that with Robert Bell, with the Office of Economic Conclusion and Equity. And we also send them out to all the registered vendors. I think we have well over 300 or 400 interested vendors for placement services that we send our procurements out to. So all of those are initiatives that we're using to try and make sure that we're getting a broad array and staying as close as we can to home. We also have been working with a group of 13 private foster care agencies that actually one of Margie's staff and I meet with weekly. It's called the Cincinnati Foster Care Collaborative, and they have been providing active feed- And they have been providing active feedback and collaborative work, particularly during the pandemic and even prior to that, but so that we were trying to minimize expectations around visits, around getting families represented in courts and all those types of things. And I know Margie could probably actually speak more to some of those initiatives that her teams are working on. But those are, those are three different areas where we have really tried to work on keeping kids local and keeping them supported in the homes that they have. They've been particularly hit during the pandemic with kids that were being homeschooled. It's been very difficult for foster parents that may have kids in four or five different school districts and having the bandwidth within their homes to make sure that all of those kids can stay connected. But anyway, those are, those are tangential to the procurement, but probably more exciting. Anyway, Margie or Tim, did you have anything else that you wanted to share about that?
I don't. Margie?
No, I think, you know, Laura's correct. This year, you know, really we, we have been in close contact with our providers continually to make sure that our children's needs are continuing to be met and to respond to challenges as, you know, some of them brand new challenges for all of us.
So with that, again, the child placement, you're going to see, I think even on Thursday, I think Laura, we have fourteen child placement contracts because they come in waves as they come back. And this is a big wave. On your, on your agenda for, for Thursday, we wanted to hope you make sure that you understand the process that we go through and the effort that we, we try to make to keep kids here or with the best provider they can potentially be with. But Madam President, we're happy to answer any questions or hear any thoughts that you or the rest of the board have.
Thank you so much, all of you. I'm just really impressed at, we had looked at, we know that the Commission was adamant about trying to keep our children close. And not that you guys weren't initially, but there was just a encouragement advocacy by our Commission to make sure that happened. It's great to see those numbers going down. I think about the kinship funding. I believe we were one of the first, if only, I'm not sure. Commissioner Dreehouse may know.
We were the first, right?
Yeah, I thought we were. Okay. For that kinship funding, we just didn't want to make it hard on the families to do the right thing. And so, and also I want to thank Laura. I don't know if it's Laura or Joyce who, as we looked at the procurement process, I had asked you guys to add another column to just be more specific. It was you, Laura. Okay. Because we look at the numbers and where it's going to, but not really able to understand the services that were provided. And so you guys did that. It makes us, the clarity is so much better. And so also emphasize the fact that we have foster care homes, but to open up the window and look at maybe some new people that have foster homes that you guys are not maybe familiar with. So I've seen some new ones also. So I thank you for all the work. I thank you for the flexibility and listening. And it's obvious by the numbers that are, that are going down. It's still too many out, you know, in other placements, but we're, we're working toward that goal. So I just personally want to thank you. I'll open it up for Vice President Reese if you have any comments or questions.
Yes, thank you. On here, the fifty-five that are placed outside of Ohio, are we, are we looking at across the river or a lot further?
So it's a combination. Most are in Indiana across the border. We have a couple of facilities there. Others are in Michigan. We have a couple of facilities there and I'll ask Laura if she can recall where contracts are otherwise.
Yeah, we, and, and I can pull up the synopsis, which I send out to Tim every week that helps share all those details that you guys, when you're looking at the agreements, we do have some, particularly with singers, we call them single source agreements where we have unique needs for kids that aren't being met by our, our local community and our, our local network. There are some in Arkansas and I know that's a long ways away, but sometimes we have to find the best fit for the, for the needs of our children. We do have Michigan. We have Kentucky and Indiana. I'm, I'm running through the list in my head, but I don't have the names all in front of me, but.
One of the primary reasons for sending kids out of state is, you know, we have a very robust provider community in Hamilton County and in Ohio. But unfortunately, at times we run into kids who have such extreme behavioral issues that there are only a few entities in the country that will accept kids that have those particular things. This is a struggle unfortunately, not just for Hamilton County, but for counties throughout Ohio. Those are generally very expensive placements. And actually Jeff and Margie and I have had some conversations about how to, how to incentivize perhaps providers here to provide some of those more extreme services so that we could keep those kids local. But, you know, I, I, I can't overstate this. The, in a lot of cases, the, the children we're talking about are, are probably children that you've never come in contact with because they have such extreme issues and have since birth that we're trying to keep them from, from going from one system into another one as they get, as they get older. So we do everything we can to keep kids closer, but sometimes it's just not possible. And as Margie said, some of those kids that are out of state may be in a kinship home with a relative that lives out of state and that was the best place for them.
Thank you.
I did want to say, add just one more little thing on that. And in the document that Tim was sharing earlier, we talk about in 2011, which I know is ten years ago. We did partner with our multi-system partners. And actually we're doing joint contracting on the, for those types of placements. So sometimes they may not be JFS kids, but there may be Hamilton County kids, their Juvenile Court, DDS program, Mental Health and Recovery Services. So we do the contracts for all of those partners. We pay for them initially and then they reimburse us for those placements. So that's another area where we've done collaborative work to, you know, minimize administrative overhead and types of expectations around that.
Thank you. I know as a social worker, twenty-something years ago, we were doing interstate compacts. And so there's always a need where we don't have it here, but we have to make sure that the children are served. So. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to follow up on the kinship care piece. As you said, we took some action, I guess it was a couple of years ago now, to offer stipends for kin families to take kids into their homes, which I thought, you know, when we all agreed was the right thing to do at the time and it still is the right thing to do. There is a, a movement afoot up at the state level, given the budget cycle that's going on right now. And the County Commissioners Association of Ohio has reached out to all of us to say, hey, you know, we're interested in having you all lobby for certain things that are good for counties. So energy defense is one of them, but this foster, or the kinship care piece is also one of them. So clearly not every county has done what we did. And so help me better understand, we, I believe it was three hundred and fifty dollars a month per kin family, trying to get them to something that was similar to a foster family, not, not as much, but we were getting there, right? What would it mean? Or, or do you know more about what's being asked for at the state level? Or rather what's kind of being contemplated and how that would interact with what we've already done in Hamilton County?
Yeah, I'll let Margie and Laura pick up where I leave off because they're much smarter about this than I am. Basically, the state of Ohio got sued. And, and there's a variety of counties named in that, in that suit for not providing the same money to kin providers. Hamilton County actually has a child that's named, or a family that's named in that suit, even though we've been doing this. But the state of Ohio got sued, as did all the, the counties in this re, or the states in this region. Most of them at some point implemented a kinship sort of program. Ohio did not. So as this game steamed recently, the governor said, we are going to implement a kinship program in Ohio in every county. So he did something very late last year, just like that. You know, the associate, the CCIO, OJFSDA, PCSAO, we're not aware it was coming. It was sometime late in December and it, they rolled out the, the things we've been studying. We believe actually our program is probably better than the, the, the program that the state is going to roll out. The difference is obviously the money right now we are paying. In, in the case of the state program, the state would pay. So there is benefit to that, but, and, and Jeff and I have talked about this as well to, to, to try to figure out what's the best thing to do for, for kids in Hamilton County. But I'll turn that over to Laura and Margie to talk a little bit more about it. Because that, well, Margie knows more about it certainly than I do.
So we have gotten some guidance from ODJFS about how they'll administer the funds. And so we're trying to determine internally, how do we obviously leverage and use those state funds? But continue to supplement and support our families. So part, one challenge really is, and this is getting a little bit in the weeds, is we, we connect families who are eligible to OWF, so child only cash assistance on top of the stipend. And in, in the state's model, families would no longer be eligible. And the OWF is really is, you know, dollars that are sustainable for families in the long run. So if a family, you know, if a kinship family ends up with custody of a child, that's a, a long-term means of support. So again, so we're trying to just figure out what's the best for families and what's, you know, the least disruptive in regard to implementation. This is, the stipend is only a six-month period and then it ends. There is encouraged, you know, there's, the ask of the caregiver is to become a licensed foster care provider, which we always discuss that with our kinship caregivers. They're, you know, they can become licensed. Often we find that our families don't want to become licensed. They're coming to take care of children for a different reason. They have an obligation to, you know, and a passion and a love for their relatives. And so where, you know, foster parents are often looking at, you know, serving many, many children. So they're, you know, so there's a little bit of a, you know, disconnect around the motivation. Becoming licensed is, it's, it's a, it's a process. I mean, there's, there's training, there's, you know, we, we obviously assess families before we place children, but it's, you know, the foster care system comes with more rigor in terms of obligations to a family who is really just stepping up to take care of their loved ones.
Well, and how would you feel if, if you had a niece or a nephew that, you know, their parents had an issue and you were taking them on, taking that child in and somebody says, well, if you, if you want this money, you're going to have to go get licensed. And to Margie's point, you know, six months in the life of a child, you know, and, and the life of that family and their ability to maintain their responsibility for that child is just not very long. And that's why we chose to do it for, you know, for, for much longer because, you know, you're, most people's financial situation that get involved in this don't change greatly in, in six months. If they needed the help on day one, they also needed the help on, at six months, at twelve months, at eighteen months, at twenty-four months, as they're raising that child. Because that's what they're doing. And, you know, all of us who have raised kids know it doesn't, it doesn't begin to cost less to, to do as you're going on. It generally starts to cost more because as that child gets older, they, they want to do more things. They need to go more, more places. Their clothes are more expensive. They eat more food. They do all those things. And the most important thing we ever do as children's services is provide a stable environment for kids so that they're not here today and there tomorrow. That happens. It happens far too frequently, but anything we can advocate for that keeps a child in a safe, stable environment is what we should be all about, you know, what we should be all about. So.
So Tim, did we happen to send our sample up, of our program that we already have? We did. Okay. Is there a possibility or is it too early to know whether or not our program could be grandfathered in? Even though the state is going to pay, maybe they could supplement our program. So where are we since we did send up our, our program?
That's exactly what we're, what we're hoping to do is whatever gaps exist between the state program and ours, that we would be able to fill those. We've also sent them to the, the attorneys who are fighting on behalf of Ohio for this, so that if there were a settlement that perhaps, you know, part of the agreement would maybe be able to, you know, expand the program perhaps, and maybe we could inform that. As Commissioner Dreehouse mentioned, working with CCIO, we're also working with PCSAO and OJFSDA. But truly, this came out of the blue. Normally it's in a budget bill or something where there's an opportunity for all the associations to say, hey, great idea, but let's take these, let's add these steps. This was literally entered, you know, introduced by the governor and, and a press conference happened that said, we're doing this. And there was no feedback from the, from the counties, which has been very rare. You know, in, in this administration, but particularly in this environment. But I really think it was just a response to the lawsuit as well as the, the child, Child Welfare Transfer, Transformation Council that he had put in, that the governor had put into place that recommended something like, like this occur as well. So.
Is, so the lawsuit then identified this discrepancy between a foster family and a kin family. So did it require that we fill the gap? Because I, I'm, my understanding is that the kin amount is, is a little less than the foster amount. So I, I think maybe it would be helpful for us to understand what that gap looks like as we think about, the state may be providing some of the same kind of funding. And then if we have, I don't want to call it extra funding, but funding then that is no longer needed for a certain purpose, maybe it's an expansion, like you said, in an increased amount to get us a little bit closer to the foster families. Is that what you guys are thinking?
Yeah, I, our, our amount is actually more than what the, what the state is proposing to pay. But the length of, the length of time they're looking to do it is significantly shorter. So we are perfectly comfortable continuing for a longer period of time. We're just trying, and, and as Margie said, and it, it's not unimportant that if you are a kin provider and you take on a child, you are, you may be morally responsible to do that, but you are not legally responsible to do that. So you are eligible for something called, as she said, TANF, OWF cash payments for that child, which I think for one child, it's, it's right around the same amount. So in Hamilton County, we had to, we had to fight for that. At when we initiated, when we initiated this program, we had to fight for that to get the state to approve that. So these families get the stipend and if they so choose, get the OWF. So they're, they're getting more money. And that's something the state doesn't want to do with, with their program. So there, we're, we're learning more as we go along and, and ODJFS is sending us, you know, bits and pieces of information here and there. Perhaps what we can do is provide Jeff with a, you know, sort of a rundown of what's happened and where we are. And, and submit that to him so he can share it with all of you.
That would be great. That would be, um, Commissioner Drehouse, did you have anything else?
No, I do, yeah, I just look forward to getting that um as we are now in another budget cycle. And, you know, want to kind of better understand what the state's offering, what we're already doing and how those two things interact. That's all. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any additional questions or comments from uh our commissioners? That's shaking. No, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you all for coming and thank you for the clarity and that additional information that you'll be providing that we'll be reviewing. So thank you uh for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to our next agenda item. Um, Joy Pearson and Emily Carnahan is here to talk about um some more good news as it relates to some funds that have been obtained uh for affordable housing. So. All right, is Joy there?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to be sharing my, I'm going to be sharing my screen with the PowerPoint. And Emily's going to start us off and then I'll jump in um with about midway through. So we're tag teaming today.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, thank you for having us. Um, so uh these, um, as you can see, are the um 2020 recommendations for our um home funds. Um, so these funds are for um primarily for affordable housing development is what we use them for now. Um, so you can see the, the top line, that is our 2020 home uh grant award from HUD. Um, and we allocated um 50,000 of that for um nonprofit um community housing development organization operating support. Um, and then um that, the remainder or the, the 238,000, excuse me, is for um administration and um we've also are underway with five um community housing action plans um for five jurisdictions. Um, so that leaves um a little over 1.1 um million dollars available to award for affordable housing development. Okay, um, so since 2016, um, the county has funded affordable housing development through a competitive RFP process. Um, the minimum request is $50,000. The maximum award this year is $500,000. Um, in general, projects uh must serve low to moderate income households in participating jurisdictions and county. Okay, um, so for our review process, um typically we um released this RFP in the fall. And the first round of applications was due on November 16th, um, and we did not receive any applications. So we um re-released um the RFP on December 1st. And we had a um, an optional um Q and A session on December 16th. And then applications were due on December 28th. Um, staff reviewed the proposals for um completion and eligibility and then completed the initial underwriting review. Um, and as the years passed, the county contracted with the National Development Council, NDC, uh for their expert review and to ensure compliance with HUD's home regulations. So we received um four proposals um uh for about 1.08 million dollars in the second round. Um, all of the information, um, the applications, the summaries, the underwriting was shared with the Community Development Advisory Council, um, CDEC in early January for their review. And then they met in mid-January to um, twice, they met twice um to make the recommendations that you will see here in a minute. Okay, so here is the, a summary table of the, the applications and the project program where they're located. Um, the previous award and what is recommended for this year. Um, so you can see, the first one is um CMHA uh Mariana Terrace um redevelopment. They're rehabilitating that um, it's in Lincoln Heights. Um, and they received $210,000 in 2019 and requested an additional 290,000 for 2020. Um, MVAH is um uh requested some additional funding for their Wayne Loffs uh project that is located, um, technically in Woodlawn, um, but it's, it's right there um off Wayne, um, near Lincoln Heights. And they received 300,000 last year and uh are being recommended for 200,000 this year. Uh, Habitat for Humanity um submitted a, a new application, um, but it is a continuation of some previous um projects that we've done with them in the past. Um, so they are, um, their application is for six single-family units, four in Lachland and two in West College Hill. And um, uh, their 2020 recommended award is 450,000. And then the Housing Network of Hamilton County, um, that project is the Freedom Homes. Um, those are uh rental units for individuals with disabilities. Um, and there's, there's 12 total units, but eight are in the county, um, four in Springdale and four in Fintetown. And you can see they, they've previously been awarded about 360,000 and their current recommendation is about 139,000. Um, so here you can see a little bit um more information. Um, we can see the total number of units. So this total comes to 146 total um with, for our 2020 funds. Um, uh, we have quite a bit of leverage. A couple of these are um obviously much bigger projects with the RAG conversion and a new construction multifamily.
Okay, um, I meant, I, I failed to start us off with an overview and I apologize. Um, the home funds, the home grant is the Home Investment Partnership Program. And it's one of three entitlement grants that the county receives from HUD. So the formula, the, the grant is formula, based on a formula uh for the need in our county. Um, up until 2016, we, well, I should say beginning in 2016, we began to solicit projects from housing developers and programs from nonprofit providers. Um, I, I, I'm happy to say that in five years, we have uh built relationships with 13 different partners. So that's a, a real big win for us. We're, we're um always out looking for new partnerships and new projects. And we are excited about the leverage that we've been able to achieve. Um, the investment of 6.3 million dollars has brought 143 million dollars of investment for affordable housing here in the county. So um, one thing I wanted to also clarify is we have never had a um such a lackluster response to our first, uh, to our RFP. And we've been told it's due to COVID mostly. Um, there's an increase in costs for construction, difficulty getting contractors, difficulty, difficulty in changes with tax credits. Um, there were changes in the state and the federal law as recent as December 26th. Or just, yes, and our deadline was like right after. So um, we, we had quite a few um agencies that obviously that we funded in the past that, that, I'm not agencies, but I'm sorry, um, projects where there was a funding gap. Um, the other funding sources fell through, or sometimes the cost of construction went up as much as 30%. I think we've all seen the news or seen it at Home Depot. Um, the cost of, of lumber is up 30% um or was at, at one point. So anyway, I wanted to give you the, the, the big picture overview um of, of where we are. So this is a summary of the projects that the county has funded. Um, and I'll show you a, a couple of um more detailed uh information. This is the list of projects that were funded last year. And many of those are being requested, are being recommended for additional funding right now. Um, I'm not, the, the, the projects are including also down payment assistance programs, which we have a program specifically with Habitat for Humanity for their home buyers, as well as the homeownership center and also working in neighborhoods. I will show, um, these are the summaries of the last couple of years and you can see the variety of the partners. Um, we do have a couple of, of pictures, I think, uh, to show. This is a project, a project underway. It's ahead of schedule. Uh, Logan Tower used to be called Volunteers of America or Central Parkway Towers. This is right by Finley Market and the um current, the, the former occupancy with 90 units, they were very, very small. Um, it was impossible to get a, a full-size sofa through the hallways. And it's, it's being changed to 60 units of um total housing, 30 of which are permanent supportive housing. And everyone that lived there is being offered the opportunity to come back. Um, the, those that can, the, the um discrepancy from 90 to 60 um is, was, there was a waning of the occupancy so that nobody was displaced. And if they want to come back, they can. And some of these clients already have the need for permanent supportive housing. This is uh with Talbert House and Model Group. This is a, a project that was completed a couple of years ago with Lydia's House. This is eight units of family housing, um, in, including three accessible units on the first floor. They're, they're accessible, not ADA, 100% um changed over. They're just accessible for folks in wheelchairs to get in and out and to use the, the, the kitchens and the, the space. These are uh the, on the second floor. Um, and these are two, three, two and three unit, um, two and three bedroom units. This is a Habitat project in um, in Lincoln Heights that was just completed last year, just one of, one of six up there. And um, this is the Housing Network project that's underway. There, uh, this is the one in um Springfield Township and where the Brentwood Swimming Club or Cottonwood Swimming Club used to be. Um, they had significant costs to excavate the swimming pool and, and other site issues. So um, that's an example of, of a, of a project that is currently underway and nearing completion. So these, just another list of this 2017 projects. And, and we have shared this with the clerk and make sure that you have any information, additional information you would like. Um, the, and this is, oh, I guess a duplicate, I'm sorry, of projects. Oh, I went the wrong way. Okay. Um, this is eight 21 flats, the four pictures, this is over in the West End. We, it's permanent supportive housing. Again, um, we are able to partner with the City of Cincinnati for special needs population housing, which to date has been eight 21 flats and Logan Tower for permanent supportive housing. There are no permanent supportive housing projects outside of the City of Cincinnati at this time. And we, so we've partnered with the city to provide our funding and leverage additional support for those projects. These are uh 2016 projects as well that included Annabelle's Place for Veterans and um as well as West Union Square for senior housing in Corrane Township and, and uh additional Habitat projects and a gut rehab of Maple Knoll Meadows in Springdale. Um, it's, which is connected to, or inside Maple Knoll um village. So. With that, I think that's, that's it. We're, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, both Emily and Joy. Um, I, I have a few comments, but I'll wait to the end. Uh, Commissioner Reese, you have any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, on the um, and the projects that we're funding, um, recommended for this year's funding, what is the completion date? I see some that um we gave help to last year and we gave help to this year. Do you have um a completion date? And if you do have it, I may not have it in front of me. I just have what I have because I'm not at my office, but um, that would be helpful.
We can share that information. Each one of the projects has a different completion date. And those projects that have low-income housing tax credits in them traditionally take three to four years to, for completion. In general, most projects are completed within two years. But um, we also had delays due to COVID that were unanticipated this year for several projects, uh, such as um Hurt has doing single-family homes in Lincoln Heights. And they've had some delays due to COVID. So we will share us uh anticipated completion dates with you um individually separately.
Thank you. Um, and my other question is, um, do we have any um data on uh, you know, how many jobs, the, the investment? I know we've got the investment of the project, but you know, in terms of how many jobs that might, you know, have been created or helped because of the investment we made. And then the second piece is, I know that um we are, I guess, at some point uh going to have a CROSE study, but is there any language in our um in our contracting with folks to make sure that there is um, you know, inclusion uh as it relates to these type of projects? I know these are outside groups that are able to probably do more than the government.
I'm, I froze up. I, I missed that question. I'm sorry.
Uh-oh, did I freeze? I'm sorry.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I was saying, uh, is there anywhere? Because I'm always looking at making sure that the dollars that we are investing, that, that, that it is in inclusionary. And I know that we've passed resolutions and I know, well, we'll close the study down the road. But do we have any uh data of these projects that may have um also had inclusion in these projects? I mean, a lot of times we do projects in certain communities and neighborhoods and people get to look out the window. Um, and they can't participate. So I just wanted to see if maybe there is um, do we have any data as it relates to um, you know, inclusion in these type of projects? Or even, or is that even considered uh when we're looking at a project?
Sure. Um, I'll answer the first question about job creation. We just started to collect that information last year. Um, we participated in a panel um with the Housing Our Future uh Strategy Steering Committee um in a webinar about job creation and affordable housing and the impact it has on our workforce development and full-time and part-time, you know, temporary construction jobs as well as, as full-time jobs um for service delivery. And, and we will share that information um at, going, going forward, but also we'll share with you what we have right now. Um, as far as inclusion goes, um, we are the only, as far as I know, um, we're, we, our programs are the only programs in the county that are required to have MBE and Section Three goals. And we have to give preference for, for, for Section Three, and that's by HUD's regulations. So we report on those numbers twice a year and we work with Robert Bell in the Office of Inclusion um for outreach and we can share that information with you as well.
Awesome. I, I think that would be great. Um, I know it would be helpful to me because I see the investments that we're making, um, being able to hit and help people three different ways. Not only a place for affordable living, uh, not only for development for those outlining communities that certainly need this type of development, uh, but also looking at jobs that were, may have been created because of the investment that we've been a part of. And also the fact of uh inclusion and diversity. So I think all of those things are positive that we'll be able to report out. So that would be helpful.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, just one quick question. So as you showed us the amount of funding that was given to the different organizations, I didn't see a column for the um request of funding. So I, I, my question is, we, I saw the uh total amount of the project, the county's contribution, but not the request for dollars. So I assume that all of the allocations were enough to make that project go forward. Uh, you know, so do you see what I'm saying? And in the future, could we include that column? So we have a better understanding of what the request was.
Yes, um, we, this is, this year, uh, we increased the maximum to 500,000 and each of these projects was funded at the maximum request. So um, three of the four are being recommended for 500,000. That was their ask. Habitat requested 450,000, which was the maximum they could ask for their number of single-family homes. But yes, we usually have that column. I apologize that we, we lost it this time.
Yeah, I was missing it.
Deleted it. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, is that it? Uh, Commissioner Drehouse? Okay. Just a couple of questions, just a general question for me. Um, the Wayne Loffs, are those affordable housing? I've, is that affordable housing? They are?
Yes, that is a low-income housing tax credit project.
Okay.
Um, and it will be for families, correct, Emily? Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, my other question is, um, well, it's good to see Lydia's house because they're fairly new. I, I remember uh a grand opening they had maybe two years ago. So that's good. To, yeah, uh, that they're uh aware of the funding and they're putting in for it. Um, um, but the administrative costs, I remember looking on there was 200, about 238,000. So my question is administrative costs for internal staff or uh, or internal or, and external staff?
Great question. That's much higher than it usually is. Right now we have a waiver from, from, because of the CARES Act, that we can spend more than 10% of our grant. And we elected to contract with CBI and Lisk um for $100,000 to produce, uh, for $90,000 to produce um six individual housing action plans for the communities that requested it. So it's something that we plan to um solicit again in 2021. Um, we are using the initial findings from five of the six to help us to develop um recommendations for housing strategy overall for the county. for housing strategy overall for the county. But we see this as sort of a mini-grant equivalent in our block, that we have in our block grant program. But the individual communities, it was first come, first served, and everybody that asked for a plan is getting one. So we'll be bringing additional information to you about those plans and about the overall housing programs and policies for the county later this quarter.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, the CDAC Committee, I noticed that they were not listed. So could you possibly say what agencies are involved in the CDAC Committee?
Let's see. We have the Cincinnati Development Fund represented. Check me on this, Emily. And our daily bread is a nonprofit. The Community Builders has a staff person there, Santa Maria Community Services. Let's see, the Village of Woodlawn, the Village of Silverton, Colrain Township. I'm missing three. So it's a mixture of housing, or development folks and local government folks and social service agencies.
And if you can just send me that list to us, it'd be great. Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything else. With nothing else coming forward, I want to thank both of you for your work. And I know the agencies and the cities and municipalities are really excited about this. So thank you for the update.
Good work.
Thanks.
Okay. Lastly, on our agenda is the CARES Act review and allocation plan. I'm just really excited about this. It just indicates all the work that has been done by staff and by the commission. And the residents can see what work has been going on as we go through the pandemic. And also, you've seen earlier, the other work that's been done. So I'm going to open it up. I see Holly came on board. So I don't know, Jeff and Holly will probably be leading this discussion.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, Holly's going to, I'm going to just tee it up very quickly here, but just for, especially just from the perspective of residents who might be watching. Obviously, 2020 was a year unlike any other in terms of the challenges faced by the county with the COVID-19 pandemic and the way that it hit the county from an economic and social perspective just so hard. So as the board is aware, we saw in this county unemployment rates increased over 14%. We saw an increase in demand for public assistance through JFS. We saw closures of businesses and stresses on nonprofit and cultural institutions. We saw impacts to seniors. We saw impacts to those suffering from mental health issues, especially with the social isolation. We saw financial stresses and strains on schools, on local food pantries. We saw an increase in the percentage of the local homeless population that was on the street versus in shelters. So just so many different and diverse needs. You know, it's hard to think of an economic challenge, let alone the public health challenge, but an economic challenge that really had this type of wide-ranging impacts. And unfortunately, as this board has discussed in recent weeks, those challenges are not going to stop just at the end, did not stop at the end of December of 2020. So the county is going to obviously remain on the front lines of this economic and social challenge through the work of Job and Family Services and some of the other agencies of the county directly. But the purpose of the presentation today is to talk about what the county has done from a results perspective, utilizing the $142 million in federal funding that it received through the CARES Act. And also, more to the point, providing a recommendation to the board on how to allocate $6.6 million of remaining funding that we have in this CARES Act, from the CARES Act, so that we can make the most impactful use of it in 2021. So Holly's going to walk through a presentation that's going to kind of level set where we were, what we did, what the results were, and then where we recommend going from here. Ultimately, this decision is up to the board. And so we're happy to engage in that discussion, answer any questions, et cetera. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Holly.
Thanks, Jeff. Good afternoon, Madam President. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's great to see you all.
Good to see you.
And happy to be here to first share the results of the funding spent to date through our CARES Act dollars. As Jeff said, last April, we did receive $142 million as part of the federal government's CARES Act bill that passed. And at that time, you know, I'm going to take you back to March and April of last year. The board moved pretty quickly to provide policy direction on the use of those funds. And just as a refresher, that included amongst a few other things, increased capacity to support vulnerable populations, support small businesses, preserve government activities, not just the county, but also our partners at the municipalities and townships, and of course, support our first responders and healthcare systems. So from there, the board passed its initial CARES Act plan that, as you know, was amended a few times last year in order to keep up with the, adapt to the changing needs of our community. And it included funding in these four categories or buckets: public health, vulnerable populations, county operations, and community and economic assistance. Before I dig into each bucket, I want to stress that, as you all know, and I hope we've been very vocal about this, that none of these programs would have been possible without the support and leadership of the board, without a team of county employees that literally worked day and night, and incredible partnerships, some of which we already had strong partners with, and others we developed new relationships with. So really, some really good things came out of this funding. You're going to hear more about some of those programs today. So the public health bucket, you'll see here, we had $31 million budgeted for this. The bulk of that category, as you see, is for COVID-19 testing and quarantine services at just a little over $19 million. Next slide, Bridget, please. The bulk of that is our testing program. So as you all know, testing is so critical to the slowing the spread of the virus. And we were thrilled to enter into a partnership with the Health Collaborative for $18 million, which included our five hospital systems to be a part of this program to really expand testing. This program launched last September. The number of community tests we've held, this number changes every single day. So it is a few days old, but more than 40,000 tests out in the community have been conducted. The median time for turnaround on test results is 24 hours. But I will say, two weeks ago, they were turning around tests in 12 hours. Last week, it was 14 hours. And a dear friend got tested yesterday, and she had her results in nine hours. So I can't say enough about our partners at the Health Collaborative and at our hospital systems that have made this program possible. And we're thrilled that we're able to continue it. It's truly making a difference in our communities. They typically hold about 30 events per week out in the community. And I know in the next couple of days, just so you can understand the geography of where our sites are, in the next couple of days, we have locations in Western Hills, Walnut Hills, Anderson Township, Coryville, Norwood, Chiviot, and Kennedy Heights. And that's just over the next two days. So I'm thrilled with this program. In addition, and in connection with that program, we have a million-dollar contract with The United Way. And they are providing services to residents that have tested positive or need to quarantine while they are awaiting a test result. So this program, we'll call it Quarantine Services or Care Coordination, really focuses on providing an efficient and person-centric link between social service needs of our residents that are identified through our testing program. So really, if you haven't been to one of our testing sites, we do ask residents to pre-register, and some voluntary questions as part of that are, do you need any social service needs? And if it is answered yes, folks from The United Way will reach out to those residents and provide any necessary assistance required. You can see here, 4,100 residents have already been provided wraparound services, whether it's, it could be, food delivery is one of the top requests that are being fulfilled. But they've also distributed 500 health kits to help residents manage their illness. So this has been a really nice partnership with our testing program, and are grateful for The United Way for them to step up and provide this service. I'm not going to go through every program on the screen, but I do want to highlight our pandemic childcare program. Again, you know, taking you back to March, you may remember during the stay-at-home order, there were still essential workers that needed to go to work. And so childcare providers, we needed them to stay open. And the state of Ohio created a temporary license for those, for childcare providers to remain open roughly between mid-March and the end of May. And of course, in order to stay open, they had to provide additional cleaning, reduce classroom sizes, that really increased their costs to operate. So through this program, we provided funding to those pandemic-licensed daycare, childcare providers who operated during that time, up to $25,000. And we were able to help 80 childcare providers through this program, one of them being Beehive Learning Center. And you can see the quote from the owner, Erica Thomas, on how grateful she was for those funds. And lastly, you know, one of the key things that were needed early on in the pandemic and continue to this day is personal protective equipment. We're thankful for our Purchasing Department and Emergency Management Agency. They have purchased more than $4 million in PPE, masks, gloves, gowns, cleaning products, and have served more than 440 organizations with those products. So we're grateful for that and grateful we were able to provide needed services to our partners. Vulnerable populations, we budgeted $9 million, a little over $9 million for this. $3 million, a little over $3 million for senior needs and $3 million for homeless sheltering. The senior needs, we have a contract for reimbursement with the Council on Aging to provide reimbursement for increased costs. And those increased costs include food insecurity issues. You know, they are delivering, you can imagine significantly more home-delivered meals, shelf-stable meals to seniors. They are providing technology to help with social isolation, but also to help with telehealth. They're also delivering and working with restaurants to provide comfort meals to low-income seniors that are living in apartment buildings. And finally, they're providing personal care boxes and health kits to seniors. And we're going to be reimbursing them for a lot of those costs. And Bridget pulled together, and she's going to share, one woman's experience with Council on Aging's support that we're reimbursing. Bridget?
And I just wanted to call Council on Aging and say thank you. I just got a letter, I get your meal on wheels, and I like them. Appreciate it. I really do. And I just got a letter from Council on Aging that said I was going to get like a care package, toilet paper and Kleenex and things like that. And I was telling someone that, you know, you get to the age of 80 years old and all your family's gone and everything, and not many friends left. And it's just good to know that somebody's got your back and it makes you, it gives you hope and it's your spirit. And I just want to thank everybody that's involved with Council on Aging. You're wonderful. Have a good day. Bye.
So again, the power of partnerships, and we're grateful for the Council on Aging and the services they're providing. I do want to highlight a couple of other programs. The first program, you may recall, that was launched was back in late March, early May, and that was a partnership with Strategies to End Homelessness to provide funding for hotels, because you can imagine homeless shelters were struggling providing social distancing. And so we have, again, entered into a partnership with Strategies to date. I think it's through roughly early, mid-January, we've provided more than 16,000 hotel bed nights through our funding. We've also learned, moving on to domestic violence response, we learned from our domestic violence partners that calls for services, we've all heard this, I'm sure, increased during the pandemic. For example, Women Helping Women let us know that their total number of clients in Hamilton County increased by 23% when you compared mid-March through June of 2019 to 2020. In addition, their 24-hour hotline experienced more than a 50% increase in calls. So again, thanks to our CARES Plan and the board's leadership, we did provide grants to three organizations focused on domestic violence: YWCA, Women Helping Women, and Franciscan Ministries. Franciscan Ministries is for their Tomorrow's House program. Obviously, you can imagine the impact this had, and I can't, I'm not even going to try and do it justice. I think Kristin Shrimplin's quote, and thank you from Women Helping Women, the executive director, I think, says it all, that the difference was between life and death and safety or not. So again, we, I think, should be proud of the fact that you all at the board wanted domestic violence to be a key part of our plan, and we did that and accomplished that through our partners. Next slide, please. The third bucket is county operational response, roughly $42 million. The bulk of that was for public safety payroll and personnel costs. As you know, these positions were substantially dedicated to mitigating COVID-19, and it included payroll costs for 911 dispatchers, corrections officers, and sheriff deputies. In addition, we allowed departments to request reimbursement for costs they incurred due to COVID. And you can see the top four departments that requested funding. To no surprise, our facilities department is the first. For those of you that know our facilities department, they were working just furiously with additional cleaning, with building, ordering, installing, plastic barriers, making sure, again, all of our cleanings were done in all of our buildings, and we're grateful for their work. The sheriff has received roughly $500,000 in reimbursement, again, for PPE, and also for, they switched to disposable utensils as part of their response to the pandemic. Adult probation, you can see on here, a lot of that cost was for the increase in the electronic monitoring units and the electronic monitoring program. And the last cost on there, you can see, is for the temperature checks that we instituted at many of our public buildings. Next slide. The biggest bucket was our community and economic assistance. And we could probably spend an hour just on this bucket, talking about the results. We have allocated $24 million for municipalities and townships to request reimbursement for COVID-related expenses. The bulk of that, $17 million, was provided to the City of Cincinnati to reimburse them for costs. Next slide, please. And we do anticipate, I believe it's about 44 of the jurisdictions to request reimbursement. We have spent about 22 of the 24 that's been obligated. I think you all are intimately aware of our rental and utility assistance program. We're working with five organizations to help fill that need. Talbert House, Community Action Agency, Job and Family Services, St. Vincent de Paul, and Free Store Food Bank, all continuing to provide assistance under this program. And we, more than 3,000 residents have been helped. We also have quite a few assistance grant programs that we provided to both nonprofits, arts and cultural, as well as youth programs. The nonprofit, we had about 60 organizations that were funded. And this was really focused on those nonprofits that provided social services and could demonstrate an increase in costs due to COVID. We've, you know, it's hard to pick one or two out of there to spotlight, but one, we provided about roughly $26,000 to the Avondale Development Corporation to provide mortgage assistance and financial literacy training. They, as a direct result of that funding, helped 29 residents. And we also, just to show you the breadth of organizations that were provided funding, we also provided a $50,000 grant to Grant Us Hope, who is an organization, a change agent for teen suicide prevention. And they use that funding to really, you know, do a lot of transition to online and electronic programming to really help folks identify the signs of suicide and help with suicide prevention. And just so you know, we do have on our CARES page, on our Hamilton County's webpage, a list of the organizations that were funded. I guess the last one I want to really highlight on this page is our workforce development. This was a program that was started later in the year because, as Administrator Aludo mentioned in his opening remarks, we did see pretty high unemployment numbers. And so we worked with JFS to help us with these programs. They were launched later in the year. We have one program that provides tuition assistance for residents impacted by COVID that want to change careers. And so we have training providers that can help with that want to change careers. And so we have training providers that can help with that. And we, so a few of the providers, you may recognize the names as Cable Group, 160 Driving, Easter Seals are all parts of this. And we have 24 residents that have either completed the program or are currently enrolled in the program. The second program is a rapid reemployment program. And this one really was born out of our rental assistance because residents were calling for rental assistance and also asking, how can I find another job quickly? And I want to credit Mark Lawson, Executive Director of Community Action Agency, who is the brainchild behind this. And this program really helps connect people with resume building, coaching, job placement, and also provides barriers to getting a new job. So whether it's transportation, childcare, uniform costs, we can provide assistance for those. And this program really did, it didn't get started until I think November, and already 46 people have found jobs. Next slide, please. And I wanted to spotlight two last programs, our Small Business Relief Program. This was, we did an initial round back in, the second program we launched in April or May, and did another round in the fall. And you can see almost 800 small businesses were provided grants up to $10,000. Of those, well in the majority of like 90, 95, 98% were businesses that had 10 or fewer employees. And I think when the, when the board was looking at this program last year, that is a group, especially early on, that was missing out on the federal assistance. And I really think we hit the mark on that with this program. And I can't thank enough HCDC, who was a tremendous partner in administering this program, and I'm grateful for their their support and their help. And next slide. And the last program on community and economic, this was one of the last programs that we launched. I think it was in early December, was a reimbursement program for our schools, given the additional costs that they incurred. And you can see almost, well, 80 schools and school districts were provided funding for PPE, primarily additional costs for nursing staff, substitute teachers, and cleaning, of course. Next slide. So with all that said, and I'm going to take a, take a break, and because I went through that so quickly, out of respect for your time, but wanted to make sure, first of all, before I move on to 2021, are there any questions on 2020 or anything I didn't hit or spotlight that you'd like me to comment on or answer?
Thank you, Holly. I'll see if Commissioner Reese, do you have any questions or comments?
I'll hold mine till we get to, I guess, the 2021 and let, because you all were were here with that. So I'll let you all go first. And if I hear something that may have been missed, I may ask for clarification.
Thank you.
You say, good job. I want to start there. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dree House?
Yeah, that, so I just want to say thanks to Holly and the team. I know there were a number of people that were working 24/7 on this. I know that because you were in here on the weekends and I saw you. So, you know, this was a Herculean task, putting out this kind of money in such a short period of time and really meeting the needs of the people and listening to what was being said as we were talking to small businesses and folks that were receiving rent assistance and learning from that and responding to that. And so you guys really did a great job. Hopefully, we'll get to do it all over again, Holly, if we get another package from the federal government. But I just want to say that, you know, I am personally proud, I know this board is proud of the work that you did and the relief that we were able to provide. So thanks again to you and the rest of the team for putting in so much time and effort into getting those dollars out.
Thank you. And I just want to make a couple comments before we go to the 2021. And, you know, it was just, this terrible virus happened. And we hit the ground running. We did not miss any group. We just kept running. What about the youth? What about the seniors? What about this? And you guys just took it and ran with it and worked through it. And I could not be more proud. I am so, so proud of the shortness of time that we had to do this, the creative interventions that were taken, all the groups that were impacted by this. And I just thank all of you, as Commissioner Dree House was saying, you just took it and ran with it. And the commission was there with you, just supporting you. And I just thank you so much. I think, and please thank all the staff for the work that's been done.
That's, I really appreciate that. And if you don't mind, Bridget, could you go to the last slide? Because while we're doing that, I just want to recognize the team. I was going to do that at the very end, but I think this is a more opportune time. So this is your CARES team. So the group on the left are the ones that we're meeting every week. The group on the right are the ones that really pushed forward a lot of the programs. I know you heard from Joy and Emily earlier today, those two were your point on the nonprofit, the youth, the Wi-Fi, the, I'm sure they're rental, I'm sure there's eight other programs that Joy and Emily were a part of. So this, this, and of course, I can't, I just, if you don't mind obliging me just one more minute, is to thank Jackie and Leslie, because the number of resolutions that had to come forward and contracts that had to be pushed through, and their patience with me and last minute, because we were moving so quickly, I just want to make sure, I give a huge shout out to those two because they bent over backwards to to make sure we were following all of our protocols. So.
Very good.
Thank you.
And this will be added to the website, or it would be great to add it to the website when our website is up. So those people in the community that are wondering for this whole year, when this virus was going on, this pandemic continues to go on, what were their legislators doing at the board? And they can just obviously see all the work that's been done. So that would be great. Thank you.
So for, for 2021, we do have roughly, out of the 142 million, 132 of it has been either spent and or encumbered. And so those funds that are still encumbered in a purchase order or under a contract have been extended into 2021. And those programs include COVID-19 testing and quarantine services, again, with the Health Collaborative and United Way. We have extended the contract with Strategies to End Homelessness through, through the end of April for any additional hotel needs of money that's still available. I mentioned Council on Aging. We are providing extensions for some communities that need a little bit more time to get their reimbursements turned in. Rental assistance, again, these agreements that we have were extended into 2021 to allow, basically for the, any funds that are still remaining with our partners to to be able to get that money out over the next few months. The Convention and Tourism, I didn't hit this initially, but this is a $2 million agreement we have with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We were going to do a safe reopening campaign late in the winter. However, we paused that because we were spiking and didn't think it was the right time to do a safe reopening campaign. But that campaign is still going to happen in 2021. And we're looking forward to to getting the board up to speed on the progress of that. And of course, the workforce development I mentioned will continue as well as our communication efforts. And so these, these programs listed here, their funds have already been encumbered, they're already obligated. We're just continuing it into 2021. Next slide, Bridget. So you can see, as I mentioned, with those contracts being extended into 2021, we have roughly 11 million remaining of that. We are recommending the continuation of some of the programs that haven't been already, funds already encumbered out of our existing programs, and just a little over six and a half million in new program recommendations. Next slide. So the existing programs, again, these are already in our plan. We want to continue not changing the total budget for PPE, keep that moving. Continue in the public health bucket, providing assistance to public health for vaccination assistance. Continue with a little bit more contact tracing dollars. The alternative care facility, we budgeted $500,000 in our plan for this. We haven't needed it. In talking with Emergency Management Agency, the advice we received was, let's keep it for now as a placeholder. If we don't need it through maybe the spring, let's revisit how we could potentially reprogram that money. And that's half a million that we may be coming back to the board to reprogram that if it's not needed. Again, we have a little bit of extra money unencumbered for the homeless services, but we would like to keep that for homeless services, including day shelter operations, or if there's any other additional needs we're not aware of now. Little bit of remaining funding in county operations. What we would like to continue with that is to provide, we're providing funding for contact tracing cell phones, as well as, I mentioned before, temperature checks, continuation of that. And then lastly, our communications, small amount of money to continue that, including, we would like to recommend an additional almost $30,000 for closing this health gap to continue their campaign that you all heard about, I believe it was last week. And so with, with the, the remaining funds from that, roughly 6.65 million, these are our recommendations. We do the bulk of it. We do recommend a third round of small business assistance with eligibility and criteria to be determined. And if, if the board agrees, be determined pretty quickly. We are also recommending funding for the increased demand for food. While we did provide some funding for food through our nonprofit grants last year, what we have heard, especially from recently from the Free Store Food Bank, was that they're seeing additional food costs up to $200,000 a month just for Hamilton County alone. So we'd like to play a stronger role in that if the board so chooses. We also, the county's phone system is not responding well to the remote workforce needs, to put it lightly. We did have this in our CARES plan last year. However, we pulled it out because it wasn't going to be able to be finished by the end of the year. And that was prior to getting the extension. So we do recommend updating that because while Andy Knapp could probably go on for about 25 minutes about the desperate need for this, it comes down to three key things for me, which is, if you're working from home, most of our workforce cannot do call forwarding from our, their office phone to their cellphone. That's a basic service. We cannot, conference calling, while not everyone needs to do it with Zoom now, but we are limited in conference calling lines. And lastly, and to me, most importantly, is Hamilton County Public Health's phone system, as you can imagine, has a huge increase in demand and bandwidth. And they need their phone system upgraded. Unfortunately, the way our phones are all integrated, we can't upgrade public health phone system without upgrading the entire system. And that's why we are recommending this upgrade. And we're also, we've talked about this, I think, over the past couple of weeks, is we have a lot of assistance programs available for residents. And it's tricky to navigate, you know, what are those systems? Who's eligible? Am I eligible? And we're also hearing more and more over the past few months that residents that may not have ever needed to seek assistance, need assistance now, and may not be familiar with how to navigate that and where to go for assistance, who to talk to. And so we, I think, as we have talked about, is setting aside funding for some type of resident navigation assistance programs, similar to like our care coordination with United Way, especially in anticipation of potentially receiving additional federal dollars for more assistance programs coming down the pike. The two last things, you notice that absent from this is additional rental assistance. And that is intentional because we are receiving a separate pot of money, $15.3 million from the federal government for rental assistance. So there's no, no, no need to use these funds for that. And we still have some programs that are closing out from 2020. And so if there are additional dollars that become available, we will definitely keep the board updated and come back to you immediately with recommendations for any additional reprogramming. With that, Jeff, I don't know if I've missed anything, or do you want to add anything?
No, just, just very briefly, just to close out, Commissioner. So again, as has already been said, I just want to thank Holly and Bridget and the broader county team that has worked on this. There was a lot of, obviously, a lot of work put into the, to the past projects and allocations on this, and a lot of work and thought put into the, the recommendations on where we go from here. I think what we have before you for consideration is something that, that looks to kind of blend between what we did in 2020 and where the board wants to go in 2021 with the discussion of the, of new dollars that may be coming from the federal government, as well as the Recovery Task Force Initiative that we are now working on, trying to focus and accelerate some of the existing county initiatives that are already going on. And I think that delves very effectively into the, or integrates very effectively into the navigational programs that Holly spoke of. So I think we, the recommendations we have forward, put forward for you today are very well thought through, but certainly we are open to comment from the board. Ultimately, it's the board's decision as to where we go and how we allocate these dollars. So we're more than happy to talk about any massaging of this list, modification, et cetera. So open to any question you might have. And one final thing, Madam President, just also wanted to, Holly had mentioned all of our partners on this, and I do just want to generically put out a thank you to all of them. There's way too many to list. But it includes all the, the agencies we worked with, as well as just the broader community and every entity that's involved, that was involved with this, including our partners in the media. I know some of the, one of the programs, as Holly was going through, and we're, as we think back into last year and what the genesis of some of these were, you know, sometimes we might have heard an interview with an impacted party on, on the radio, on a local media channel. And, and that got us talking that day about, hey, we heard this, is this really a need? And should we reach out? And so Holly would reach out to the organization, find out what was going on. So this was really a case of the entire community on, on all cylinders pulling together to find a way to solve some of these problems. So with that, Madam President, I'll just turn it back to you.
Thank you so much. And once again, thank you for all your work. And I have a few comments at the end, but I'll open it up. Commissioner Reese, do you have anything you'd like to say or comments or questions?
Yeah, actually, yes. And again, I want to thank you all. And I do want to acknowledge it was something that hit everyone unexpectedly. And we had a theme of we're all in this together. You heard media not competing with each other, but with one message, that we are in this together. You had agencies and political folks saying, we're in this together. You had folks that were elected officials. I was not elected official at that time, but you have people, elected officials, you all had, very seldom do you get $142 million and say we can, you can actually help some people. That's a, that's a, an elected official's dream to be able to have money. That's our biggest thing. We don't have money. We have ideas and we want to help people, but we don't have the funding. And then the funding to have a deadline. A lot of times we get stuff, we don't have a deadline. And we had mentioned the state earlier, you know, the state, if it's not in the state budget, there is no deadline. It'll go on forever and ever and ever. We got time, we got time to study it. But they forced a government to move in a different direction, move quickly, because we had a deadline to get it to the people. It forced hospitals to break down those barriers of, you're not with this system, but you with that system. So we saw everybody from UC Health and Mercy Health, and it didn't matter what health you had, everybody said, we got to come together. And you had different jurisdictions having to work across lines to say, how do we, how do we do this? And then you had a lot, I want to thank the employees, but also want to thank a lot of volunteers. There were a lot of people volunteer, I was out on the volunteer side, that's the side I was on, who, you know, were not getting paid to do things, but were donating, helping each other with food, the communities that had pop-up food banks, the extra volunteers that went out to get the meals on wheels to the people. I remember going out, giving meals on wheels, and trying to get more volunteers because we were trying to get it before the governor shut down the state. And people would not be able to have access. So it was just a big thing. It was a terrible time. It's been a terrible time. But we've gotten to see the greatness of our, of our county, of everyone coming together and trying to do their part, and people working overtime all times, trying to help people. So I want to commend that. With that being said, COVID has not gone away. And people are still getting hit, people are still hurting. And so we still have to help. And so we still have to help in every way that we can. Now we're dealing with limited dollars unless the federal government brings us more money, but we're, we're talking about now. Just six point six five million dollars that you're presenting me today and all of us at the board today. There's a couple of things that I think now we have a chance to see the things we did great. And look at things that we can correct now, we might, or might can improve upon now that we have a little more time. And that is the, the goal of the Economic Recovery and Relief Task Force that we have now. How can we do it better, even if we might have less funds? What did we learn? How do we build on it? And so one of the things I feel is though we've had, we've had the supply, that's the hardest thing. We don't have that with vaccine. But we've had the supply in terms of funding. We've distributed it and we have to have delivery. But the piece that I think I want to make sure as we go forward is capacity. And so some of the things that I have heard from people, and I mean, probably all of us have heard, we've got people with money. And we still had, I think, four thousand people lights turned out just this month. Because we no longer have the bills pushed back. With that, we've had people in the, I talked to Mark from Community Hamilton County Community Action Agency. And we'd have people call our office who said, we call, but it's been thirty days that we have not heard back. And I, and he has said that they have about a thousand people in the pipeline who they have not gotten back to. I say all that not as a criticism to the Hamilton County Community Action Agency, which I'm very supportive of and was a part of them moving and getting the new building that they had, which used to be the old Elder Beerman Building when I was the Vice Mayor. I say that to pull up a point of, I'd like to see us, and maybe it's in here, and if it's not, we could consider it. We have to help with capacity. We can give to different outside organizations, but we all should be moving in one direction. And we need, if they need help, we need to, as a board, know that they need that help. And as we're making our decision on navigators or what have you, let's make sure that it's enough for what people need. And I know that United Way has done some navigation, but I think it's like five navigators. And that's tough. And they got other responsibilities. So Jeff and I have talked about that. I know we have five hundred thousand dollars here for navigation. But to be honest, I would like to see, to make sure that that is going to be enough for us to have capacity. We have a capacity problem right now. People are ready to go. They still need a lot of help. The pressure is tighter now because they haven't stopped these bills. And so we want to make sure that we've given them, we got the money there. How do we make sure that we're connecting the people in time enough? So they're not calling all over the county, going on a website and going to fifteen different places or calling different places. And we see that with the health side of COVID, although we don't control that. We don't control it. And Commissioner Dreehouse has been speaking up about it. Commissioner Dumas has been speaking up about it. Not, not been speaking up about it, but we don't control that. The governor controls that. But on this side, I just want to make sure that not only do we put the money away, we're able to connect the people with the services. And that may be the outside groups that we also have leverage with. This is six point six five million dollars that we have, but we also have given to other organizations. And I'm hoping to us to be able to bring those organizations together and have somewhat of a one stop to make it easier on the people who are looking for the help. So that would be my thing. I do have some questions about this eight hundred thousand for spending it on a phone system. I do think we do need upgrades at the county. I'm a witness. Our technology is outdated. Our website then went off, you know, line in a time of cybersecurity days. So we do need upgrades, but I'm not sure if that's, you know, if it needs to come from this pot. So I'm willing to discuss that. But those are the things. I mean, I do like the small business assistance. I like the food bank component. I like this navigation if it's done properly. And, you know, I think there could be some other things that we could leverage as well. But I just want to make sure that we are having the distribution, the delivery and the capacity to get stuff to the people in a, you know, quicker time. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Holly, for bringing this forward. You know, as we went through last year, we had some programs that I think were really important in addressing the needs in the community. And at the top of my list, and I think this is probably collectively too, were rent assistance and small business assistance. And rehousing the homeless. Those were very important priorities for the county. And so I can see the continuation of the homeless piece, the small business assistance, Holly, I'm assuming, because we learned so much leading into that second round, in order to kind of hit the mark that you referred to, there's very small businesses, especially minority owned and women owned. And we hit the mark there on the second round. So hopeful that we'll use that same kind of structure for the next round of relief, given the lessons learned. And then the rent assistance piece, I heard you saying that, that we've got additional dollars from the feds that are not part of this pot. And, and it's a lot. I mean, it's fifteen million, so that's a lot. And we're going to run that instead of through some of the partnerships that we had done last time. Because there was, there were capacity issues and timing issues that we're running those through JFS to create it. Really, it's a new partnership related to that relief. So I, I guess we're gonna, or I don't know if we're gonna talk more about that in a, a future meeting as we move through this. But I just want to say that I'm, I'm grateful that, that the things that were really the highest priorities for this community, I think, are being addressed here. So look forward to continued conversations. And on that point, what is the timeframe for us collectively passing something out related to this recommendation?
From a, so there, we had the extension that was granted from the federal government, takes this through the end of the year. But there are some, some dates toward, as you start to get into the third and fourth quarter, where if dollars haven't been obligated, depending upon which pot of money you're talking about, that we'll want to be cognizant of. I think that, you know, given the relatively small number of items we're talking about here. Our purpose today was to hear from the board, I think engage the board over the next week or so. We'd be happy to put this on, on staff meeting again next week to solidify any recommendations and then pass it at the meeting following that.
Yeah, I, I guess I was assuming that before we get any additional dollars from the federal government, fingers crossed, that this money is already allocated and out the door. So that then we, you know, have another opportunity to take a look at what we're doing and how, you know, an additional package would be used in Hamilton County. So that, Madam President, I don't know if that was your, your idea about timeframe, but I just assumed we were going to get it out before any more money came.
Well, certainly you don't want to confuse the situation by adding new monies that come in, but resolve the current monies that are coming in. And the schedule that Jeff just indicated for the staff meeting on Tuesday and have something come forth on Thursday seems like the appropriate way to go. And then we certainly will talk about the new monies that come in. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. When I looked at the screen, Holly, you had a million for food, for the food bank. And I would just say, if we can look at, and that's great, the food, the need for food just is running over. But we look at maybe a wraparound system. For instance, we helped, helped out some other agencies with housing. But then I saw on some emails and I saw when I read some literature that one of the places we helped with housing, they were putting out a request for food and asking people, just bring it in clean Tupperware dishes. We need this much for our ladies that are in this housing situation. And we have supplemented them with housing. So just, I would ask that we look at the whole gamut of what their needs are. And that it's great, we help with housing, but do they also need food? And so I would think that that food number may end up increasing if, if we look at the ones that we currently help for other needs, but also need their basic needs met. And also, as we look at, I'll just say a general statement, I'm really glad to hear about the fifteen point three million that's coming in. But just as a general statement, my focus and priority is that we spend the majority of our money toward direct services. Of course, knowing that we need implementation and different processes to make that money, those needs be disseminated within the community. But I am not into spending a large number of what's left in our pot for administrative purposes, as I asked the question with, with joy. So my focus is direct services. They can't get the direct services if we don't have a system in place to make that happen. And we did have a system in place. But to continue to increase the amount of money used to, to get that money out, I think we need to be creative, like we have been. Look at what works and what doesn't work. And if it's not working with the money that has been allocated, then we make an assessment to increase that amount of money. So that, that's where I am on the plan that was, was given. And I could talk more about that as we present it on Tuesday. Right now, it's like, it looks like a great plan. Yes, Jeff?
Yes, Madam President. So just following up on, on your comments then, and from the comments of, of, of the other commissioners. I would, so we would bring something back next Tuesday. And in the interim, we would do a little bit more research on a couple of issues that I heard. Number one was the issue of where we may have capacity bottlenecks in the system. Whether there is anything we can do in this current allocation to address those. The issue of, I think Commissioner Dreehouse brought up maybe a more robust, and next week may be good timing for this. A little bit more robust discussion on the next rental assistance program and how that integrates into this. And finally, a, a little bit more investigation as to whether our food security number hits the mark by looking at some of the other organizations maybe more involved in, in, in provision of housing services, et cetera. And whether there's some wraparound food services associated with those services. So those were the major issues I heard that we would report back on. In the meantime, we're happy to entertain conversations with individual board offices on, on thoughts on the plan. And but if there's anything else, please let either Holly or I know.
And, and Jeff, that's, that's accurate for sure. But, you know, some of the ones that have received monies in certain areas, they have a fear to ask for something. They're so appreciative of what they've gotten. Not that we've made them fearful, but it's, well, we got housing, I won't ask for food. So when we open it up and let them know, what are your needs in addition? So yeah, Jeff, you summarized it very well.
Okay.
Can I, I had something to add to that. On there, when you come back on the rental assistance piece, which I think is important. And I guess moving it in-house may be a better move right now to make sure we can get it out the door. But I want to, I had heard some, I, I know there'll be a gap in the getting up for, from what your report that you gave us, Jeff. There may be a gap in time. And I know some have indicated, well, there's a moratorium on people getting put out. I want to say that when I look at the rental assistance, I'm looking at the person staying in their house, in their apartment. But I'm also looking at the business owner, the property owner, because they don't have a moratorium on the taxes that they got to pay. We got property taxes, they got the bill. They don't have a moratorium on their mortgage. So when I look at it, I want to make sure that we can get it there quickly. And I don't want to really hear about, I mean, it's great, we've done great things. We should pat our sales on the back, it's great and everything. But then I want to be clear, there's still too many people out here suffering. There's still a lot of people suffering. And there are a lot of people who are calling who can't get in. When you're talking a thousand or two thousand people who's in the pipeline. We got the money here, millions, but they in the pipeline, it can't get to the millions. And their gas and electric been cut off. Four thousand people, I believe, been cut off. But we got millions that's available, but we can't get to them. We have to acknowledge and look at, how do we stop that bottleneck? Because I'm not satisfied, I'm not happy, I can't sleep at night, knowing that millions is available, the supply is here. But we can't somehow, over a thousand people ain't been called back. And if they were able to get called back and they had the capacity, call them back, those people wouldn't be, we had money for four thousand people not to get cut off. So I do think we need to have the money, but we also got to have the process and then look at, maybe, you know, what can, is there ways that we can improve? And as it relates to the rental assistance, you'll be able to tell us, what is that gap? And do we have enough money in the gap time to go ahead and pay for the people to have rental assistance? It helps the people stay in their homes, stay in their apartments, but also the landlord. That a lot of these landlords ain't big time, you know, people. These are people that might have some rental properties, et cetera. And, you know, we have not done anything to help them with their property taxes, their due. So if we can get that rental assistance paid to them, the person stays in the house and that person is able to pay the obligations that they may have as well. A lot of landlords also cover the water and MSD and the water bill. So, you know, again, I'm trying to keep a, I want to have a balance of helping both. And we've got the money, but I want to stop the bottleneck. I don't know what the bottleneck might be. If it is, please let us know as a board what that might be as a bottleneck and how we might be able to help. Leave that. I'm interested in, in you all's thoughts.
Well, you're preaching to the choir. You're not the only one that doesn't sleep at night. You're not the only one that has spoken directly to people that are, have problems with their rent or their food. We're all in this together, as you said earlier. We have been trying to help people that are in apartments and the landlords have not been cooperative. I've talked to AFAB about that. I mean, there, there's an eviction court. And so landlords are being invisible. So what you're saying, we know we have money. We know we're trying to get the money. We know, we just said five hundred thousand to look at some different ways to make that happen quicker. So what you're saying is, you're not, excuse me, excuse me. I am speaking. Thank you. So as I was saying, all of us are, are hurting, not like they are, because we have a warm home. We have food. But all of us realize the urgency of getting that money out. And that's why we're putting additional monies in. That's why, as Commissioner Dreehouse, they've worked night and day to make that happen. We do not feel good that people do not have what they need. And that's why we're adding more money to this process. And we're not sleeping at night to make sure that it happens. You're not the only one.
Madam President, thank you. And I hope when we move forward, we can move forward together. I'm elected like every single person on here. I have a right. I've been elected. I've not been appointed. I was elected. And I have a right. Give me a minute.
We all three were elected.
Madam President, I don't know where you come from, because I think it's out of line when I'm talking to the administration about what I'd like for them to bring back to the board the next meeting. That is what I'm talking about. I don't, I'm not talking about 2020, that is over. I'm talking about 2021. And what I'm saying is, when I ask the administration with something like everyone else, I've not interrupted anyone else from asking the administration.
So make your point, make your point.
I know, I have a lot of time to talk. I've earned the right to talk. I've earned the right to talk. Other commissioners have been on and talked. I've earned the right to talk on the meeting like everyone else. I've earned a right, unless you can show me in the Ohio Revised Code by law.
Can you make your point, please?
I don't have to get to the point. I don't have to get to the point till I'm ready to get to the point. But I would hope that I would have the respect that I have earned, that the people put me here to ask the questions. Now, the questions that I have add, add to the administration are questions that have come into my office. This is not a competition. This is not about what was done in the past. We ask, what do we want to bring to the next meeting? And I said, what I'd like them to bring to the next meeting is the, is the fifteen million dollars and the gap that will be there.
We've already said that.
Madam President, we will have respect for each other. We will do that, okay? We will have respect. I just want to be clear with you. Other commissioners have been on and I've watched them, they talk for hours and hours and hours. And never have been interrupted in the way that I have, never have been disrespected in the way, even those who have other parties have never done. So we're not going to start that today. Now, I want to be So we're not going to start that today. Now, I want to be clear on what I did ask. And I would hope that that would be brought back to the next meeting. But I want to be clear, I will not be told when I can talk and when I cannot talk. I will not be cut off. Let me just be clear with you. I will be giving respect of every other commissioner that is.
And I will too.
Yes, and no one's disrespecting you. I didn't stop you from saying what you would like to ask for. I'm the only person on here, every time I talk, it seems to be an issue. And the reality is, I was elected like everyone else, and I was reelected to do the job. I put my agenda forward when I was elected and I just was elected, and the people said they approve of my agenda. And so I'm here to ask for those agendas. So with that, I am done. I hope Mr. Aludo, you got what I'm interested in for the next meeting. To share with all of us, and I look forward to getting that information. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've already summarized what he's bringing forward. And so um. And as the president, I summarize the fact that all of us are very concerned about our residents and all of us want to make sure that things happen quickly. And all of us have looked at the needs of of our residents, and we will continue to do that. So. Um, Commissioner Dre House, did you have any final comments?
Not related to this item.
Okay, okay. All right, so we have nothing else on our agenda. Um, I was, Commissioner Reese, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Dre House, do you have any final comments?
Yeah, I I actually have one thing. Um, I think my office has circulated. Um, it's a written testimony related to Senate Bill twenty-two. I don't know if either of you are interested in signing on to the testimony. I I th- I asked Alex to circulated, it's very last minute, I was asked to do it this morning, hence it's due today. I'm like, oh, okay. So uh, I I reformatted it. Um, I've left room for signatures if you, if you want to sign on. If not, that's fine, I'll just send it up myself. But I wanted to provide the opportunity. So I, Alex, if you're listening, um. Said, I think it was final, send it out. I apologize for the late notice. And if, you know, it it's not the end of the world, it's just written testimony. Uh, for Senate Bill twenty-two. So just wanted to put that on your radar. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, with no further business coming forward, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House.
Yes.
Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.